Colleagues, are there any opening comments? Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you. I'd like to open this meeting in celebration of Catrice Powell Thompson, who was recently promoted to the rank of Colonel here at our Air Force, and we're extremely proud of her.
All right, thank you. That's excellent. Anything else, colleagues? All right, we're gonna-
Wait a minute.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Foot.
I'd just like to announce that next week, the City of Jackson will be host to the one major league sports event that the state of Mississippi has every year. It's hosted right here in Jackson, in the Country Club of Jackson Golf Tournament, the PGA Sanderson Farms Golf Tournament will be held. It brings a lot of people into the city. Economic impact is good, and it's great entertainment. I hope people take the opportunity to go out and watch this golf tournament next Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. I know I'm gonna do my best to try to get out there. Any more opening comments, colleagues? Okay. Well, we're gonna go ahead and start with the invocation by Dr. Jesse Kelly, who is pastor of St. Paul Church of God in Christ. All right, there's a typo here. I know about the Church of God in Christ. And also, Heal Church of God in Christ, War 6. And then after that, we will ask Vice President Hartley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I exalt therefore that first of all, supplications, prayers, intercession, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, for all that in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. For this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who would have all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. Shall we pray? Father, thank you for this day, its blessings, challenges, and opportunities to serve others. We pray for the leadership of our country, President Donald Trump, the Congress, and the Supreme Court. We lift up our Governor Tate Reeves, Mississippi Legislature, and the Hines County Board of Supervisors. We pray for this municipal setting. We invoke your presence here with our mayor, Mayor John Horn, our ward leaders, and all other participants. We pray that you would grant them wisdom and understanding as they make decisions and pass laws that will impact this city. Grant them a heart of compassion for the poor and less fortunate. Help them to execute justice and equity for all people of every social level. For your word says, "They that rule over men must be just, ruling in the fear of God." Be the honored guests at this meeting, and continue to bless and progress our city for the good of all its citizens. We ask these favors in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Kelly. All right, colleagues, now we're gonna go ahead and start with the public hearing. We have one agenda item comment, and then we have four, three non-agenda item comments. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the non-agenda items. Mr. George Poindexter, trash. Mr. George Poindexter. Hey, Mr. Poindexter. Please state your name for the record, and then you may proceed.
My name is George Poindexter.
Give me one second, though. I forgot to give the ground rules. You have three minutes for public comment. At the 2.5-minute, two-and-a-half-minute mark, the clerk will let you know you have 30 seconds left. When the red flag comes up, we ask that you please cease your public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. You may proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is George Poindexter. I reside at 3038 LaSalle. I just wanna thank Ms. Easely and Ms. Watson, and thank Mr. Parkinson, that they came out Saturday and they started to clean up. And I came home today, the tires were removed. But we're having a situation where we have so many potholes. And when you get to the end of the street, you can't even come out the street, because if you come out, you may fool around and get ran over. So I'm just coming to the city once again, asking for your help, where they can make it visible, where we can travel up and down the roads, and those potholes. You know, it's hard to buy a car. You gotta pay for it, and then you gotta pay for repairs. It makes it very difficult, especially when you're a senior citizen. But I just wanna thank these guys for the effort that they are making, and I pray to you guys that you will continually help us, because we need your help. And we want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Poindexter. Shanti Wallace, child issues.
Hello. Hello, my name is Shanti Wallace. I think I met with y'all before. I've been to several city councilman's meeting. How are you doing? We are still on the same incident with my son. He's still in DHS custody with, I don't even know where he is. Okay, she gave, Judge Hicks gave my mom 81-years-old custody of my son, and now my son has been sex trafficked. I don't know. He's not in school. And I didn't think we, I thought we had that trudency law here, that check on the kids that's, you know, not in school. So Judge Hicks has gave custody to a man that we're not even familiar with. I don't even know, just because this man shows a lot of fake documents. But the only city leader that's been helping me with this is the Lieutenant Governor and the President of the United States. Now, I am trying very hard to get him here so he can see what is the problem. But they did remove Judge Hicks off the case. But I still haven't heard anything from DHS or anything. So it's like the case is in limbo. And I had to let the President Assistant know that I've reached out to the city councilmen. Not one of the city councilmen have reached out to me to help me with this problem. I've also been to the supervisors, the Hines County Supervisors meeting. No one has helped me with this problem. Now, from my understanding, this is going on with a lot of kids. A lot of kids in DHS system is getting sex traffic. Now, I've reached out to Mrs. Sanders, the director of CPS and DHS, and I've talked to her several times, but she has not helped me with this case at all. So I am really encouraging the President to please come down and help me, because when I call to do a welfare check on my son, I cannot even get a welfare check on my son, because my coworkers, my JPD officers, because I've been a JPD officer, I'm sorry, for 18 years. And no one has reached out to me. Then when I do call to do a welfare check, they tell me if I call again, or if I call the chief, I will be arrested. Now, that's violating my civil rights. Everybody should feel free to be able to call 911. Now, I don't know what the problem is, but like I told the President, it is a crisis here in Mississippi. I'm sorry, but my time is up. But I will be coming to every city councilman meeting, speaking out. And I am trying extremely hard to get the President down here. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Ms. C.C. Smith, issues with apartment complex?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is C.C. Smith, and I've came with the supporting evidence against the apartment complex, which would be Parkwind Apartments. I've been a resident there for approximately five months. The rent, as far as I'm concerned, is probably reasonable considering the situation the economy is in. However, I pay my rent, and I pay my rent on time. But I'm having a difficult problem with the manager. And I'm not gonna stand here and slander her, but I've already taken other procedures, such as going to the coding department, because in the building where I reside, there's a strong violation where the concrete is split in half. I've fallen twice. I've told her. I've had a letter, written letter, from my doctor, explaining to her I cannot walk the stairs. And it's been an ongoing situation, as I said. I'm in your ward, Ward 4. So someone, this has got to stop as far as, I've discovered favoritism being paid according to if you're on hood or if you're a paying person. And I know this for a fact. See, I won't say anything without supporting evidence. I can't do that. So my three minutes up. And I'd have said what I had to say. I need some, I need some help.
Okay.
Yeah.
My clerk is right there?
I'm sorry?
Valerie, if you could get her information for me, please. Is that, that's all?
Well, maybe someone does need to make a second. They came out twice for myself. Maybe someone does need to go over there and do a little bit of investigation as far as people's rights being violated. I'll say that.
Thank you. Reggie Ruffin, Frito Lake case?
Good afternoon.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor Horn, thank you for visiting us for the 40th class reunion for Frito Lake, I'm not Frito, for Calaway High School. I really enjoyed your time. I wish I had time to visit with you a little more Saturday, but I know your time is very precious. But City of Jackson and all others, been dealing with this problem actually ever since my father passed away in 2010, and learning that his death was connected to a lot of workplace abuses that happened in Frito Lake, because Frito Lake started off as a profitable company that brought prosperity to our citizens here in Jackson, and, you know, gave us that moving on up type of vibe. And over the years, I've seen lots of people who paid the ultimate price with their lives by working in a hostile working environment that subjected them to exposure to numerous hazardous chemicals and hazardous agents, such as dioxin, glyphosate, which was used for Roundup. And some of these chemicals were brought in in the '70s, and they was banned during the '80s. And when OSHA came in and started regulating the rules, Frito Lake succumbed to it, and they closed the plant down. And then after they closed the plant down, sort of typically, a lot of people was passing away, not even aware of what had happened. OSHA mandated a lot of rules for industrial companies that had abused their authority, that they were responsible taking care of their former employees and for everything's needed after they parted ways. But they neglected to inform anybody of what had happened. And then when people started passing away, I started forming my own investigation, started talking to some former employees who told me about how they used to spray the areas where they was working at, and they had no PPE. They had no type of protective gear of any sort. And, you know, if they had a problem of working there, it was like a take it or leave it, you know? So that's what, the way they was being treated. The prior, the prior Chuck Williams member was the legal representative for the, excuse me, for the Employees Union. And he worked there. And of course, now that he passed away, I tried to speak with Mr. Lamumba, the prior, the previous mayor, and it just became a little stick in the mud. But I'm hoping now with new leadership, we'll get some things done and have this thing moving along in a more effective manner. I will be back in town from time to time, trying to check on this, and I'm trying to get better media correspondence to help with this case. So I thank you for your time, and hopefully we can move things forward for everyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. All right. Colleagues, we're gonna move to agenda items. Public comment, Mr. Jason McCarty, item 32.
Hello, I'm Jason McCarty. I'm the Program Development Strategist for the United Way of the Capital Area. It's great to be with you. Mayor Horn, good to see you in that seat. I want to quickly just say thank you to then Senator Horn, who helped pass Narcan ordinance in our state legislature to help do what I'm about to do legally, because before then, it was illegal for me to demonstrate Narcan. So this is overdose prevention month, September. You are looking at someone with a 15-year drug pass that overcame an overdose. And I'm a thriving member of Jackson now, living in Ward 7, once worked for the City of Jackson. And so I'm very proud to stand in front of you as a person in long-term recovery. It's so important that we continue to make sure every Jacksonian understands the power of Narcan, because unless the Jackson residents are alive, we cannot get them into recovery. And so I think it's important, I wanted to quickly just take 30 seconds, if I may, and show you actually how to use Narcan. So this is our dominoes. It comes like this. All you do is peel it back. If the person that you think is experiencing an overdose, if you think the person is experiencing an overdose, use this. It will not hurt them if they are not experiencing an overdose. I also want to make sure everyone understands that we are now seeing fentanyl in everything. Marijuana, cannabis, cocaine, everything is seeing fentanyl. So please, this is your tool to ensure that more Jackson residents stay alive. So if they choose to go into recovery, we can get them there. You literally open the packet. You take it out. This is not a nasal spray that you have to pump. It is preloaded and ready to roar. This is their nose. You want to make sure that they're laying on their back, that there's a clear passage. You take the Narcan, insert in the nose, and one full pump is all you need. Now, when I do these trainings, last year, I think I hit every cop training in this city. I was very grateful to go around and ensure that residents did know about this. But usually, when people wake up, they don't know that you just saved their life. Please back up. They may come up swinging, because they do not know that you just saved their life. Okay? So insert one. This is not to replace 911. Thank you, 30 seconds. This is a partnership with 911. So, but you should administer this first. If you're by yourself, then call 911. If someone else is with you, have them call 911 while you're doing this. This product saves lives. I'm really, really grateful for Parkinson and the mayor for the item that you're gonna see that the United Way. I'm so grateful to work for an organization that is dedicated in the City of Jackson to ensure that Narcan is available. So thank you. I'm at my time. Mayor Horn, thank you for being here, and thank you for helping us get this over the finish line. I do ask-
Thank you.
I do ask that 10,000 Mississippians died. This opioid settlement money was for them. Please, we need to spend this money on opioid prevention, and the United Way of the Capital Area is here to help you do that.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. All right, colleagues, now we're gonna go ahead with the Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There is no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. Now we have introduction of ordinances. Number 12, please.
Ordinance amending specific sections of the City of Jackson's Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance to remove the Free Board Regulation and implement recommendations received from the Mississippi Emergency Management Agency.
Okay. Mr. Martin, or Mayor Horn, you have anything you'd like to add to this introduction? Or say about it briefly?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. We had some discussion about this item in work session yesterday. Essentially, this is, these are amendments to the city's floodplain ordinance that were drafted in conjunction with MEMA, several meetings, and getting their technical advice and subject matter advice on this. The main change of this is to eliminate what's called the city's Free Board, which is a, which is a way of raising the level of what the floodplain is for where people can build and not build. So this would eliminate that Free Board at the advice of MEMA, based on some properties within the city that this will assist greatly.
Any questions, colleagues? All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Colleagues, this will roll over and be brought forth during the October 7th meeting. Thank you. Item 13, introduction.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, renaming Pearl Street from I-55 to Pearl Street to North State Street to Frank Milton Drive.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, over and over, we hear people coming to us asking about Frank Milton and why we haven't done anything to help Frank Milton. We are not going to encroach the business community or others. Many, many years ago, when the interstate was built, Jackson did not reach out to the interstate. It was Doug Ward Boars, who became a city councilman. And he was with the time that three members that they had on the board at the city before they changed it. And he was telling me the first time he tried to get this passed, to reach out to the interstate, it failed, and he kept fighting. What I want to do is create that bridge that I think Frank Milton was for this community. A bridge to try to bring us together. A bridge to make sure that everyone in this city felt a part of this city. Whether you love Frank or hated Frank, you know his heart was in the right place. We stopping right there, State Street, just coming off where the interstate come off and run right to state. We stopped right there. We're not encroaching the business community and anyone else. But it's past time that we told Frank Milton, "Thank you. Thank you for trying, because he gave up his life trying to make this city a better place." Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, this item will be brought forth on October 21st at the 6:00 PM meeting. Introduction of Ordinance, number 14, please.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, renaming the Pearl Street Bridge from I-55 to Pearl Street to North State Street to Frank Milton Bridge.
Mr. Stokes?
Mr. President, that's the same situation. It's, we're talking about the bridge where you're coming into Jackson.
Got you.
Off I-55. So we're doing the bridge, and we're doing the street that's coming in there. It's just a small area, but it mean a lot to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, colleagues, we're gonna move to adoption of ordinance, number 15, please.
Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, reenacting Jackson, Mississippi Code of Ordinances, Article 2, Section 86-51 through 86-62.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, sometimes you need tools in the toolbox to help law enforcement. We have a lot of young people that's, number one, not going to school. And as the older people taught us, that the way out of poverty is through education. Whether they like school, hate school, I don't see anybody here who's just jumping up, "I want to go to school," and "School was old." But we know it was necessary. We got to have something to keep these young people off the streets during school hours. And part of that curfew is to make sure that they can't be out here hustling and doing other things in this city. Then at night, we got to make sure that they're out of harm's way. Too many gangsters in this city now. And the way at work, they'll get a young person underage first, and get another young person to recruit them. And they have them starting off with the wash the car, and they give them that money. Then they cut the grass. Then they give them that money. Next thing, they putting that dope in their hand. Those are how young people that I see with my own eyes get recruited by dope boys. And once they give them that money, that gun gonna come next. You don't want your loved one at a ballgame or somewhere else, and this young person that we might could have saved start shooting that pistol. Now they shooting these machine guns that won't stop shooting. It won't save everybody, but it'll be a tool that law enforcement can use. Went to the Blues Festival this weekend in Greenville to honor Bobby Rush. You know how many people were shot? Zero. You know how many was robbed? Zero. You know how much violence occurred? Zero. And we can do in the Jackson. We just need to give our law enforcement some tools. They see some of these bad kids. They understand mom and dad. Not at home, mama might be on dope, no dad in the home. But we can't make excuses for them. We can't say that it's okay because you didn't have the same opportunities as others, that you can kill people, hurt people, rob people. We can't make that excuse. You can't give them a free pass, because it might be your loved one that gonna get killed next. This curfew is not gonna be the panacea, but it'll show up the problem we having in this city. Now, I understand, Mr. President, the concern about where we're gonna take them. We got a whole youth detention center right down the street in front of the post office. Let's utilize it. We had the Lieutenant Governor trying to give us the county jail. What we can't do is make excuses. We got to stop this crime-criminal element that's taking place, especially with our young people. We need some can-do mentality versus can't-do. We hear these young people. We see these young people. And we got to do something to save them, because if we don't save them, you might be the next victim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Colleagues, any more questions or comments about this item? Mr. Hartley, and then Mr. Parkinson.
I just wanted to just make sure, since this has already been introduced at one particular time, is everything legally sufficient here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but there's some issues in terms of invitation. Captain Stokes addressed some of those, but in terms of legal satisfaction, passing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parkinson.
Thank you. I support this initiative for the reasons Mr. Stokes mentioned. Thank you. I support the initiative. I think, just to add a little bit of clarity regarding the daytime curfew, I move that we amend the proposed ordinance to add the following exception. After the exception that is currently listed as exception number eight, the provisions of the daytime curfew set forth in Section 8654B1 in effect from 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM shall not apply on days when students are not required to attend school, including but not limited to weekends, scheduled school holidays, teacher-in-service days, inclement weather closures, and official school breaks, such as summer, fall, spring, or holiday recesses as determined by the calendar of the applicable school district. The evening curfew established in Section 8654A, however, shall remain in effect on all- effect in on all days regardless of school session status, scheduled, or unscheduled breaks.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero? All right, thank you. So now we have the item as amended on the floor. Are there any more questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you, colleagues. Congratulations, Mrs. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if I could for one second, I want to thank these council members because some only been on the job two months and the man only been on job since July. And some of the things that occur in some wards might not occur in all wards. And I just hate that what I see in my ward and I know councilman hardly seeing in some parts of his ward, you just hate that one day that it could spread all over this city. And that's why we got the nip in the bud. It is not something that's mandatory that must occur in these cities. We got to take a hard line, just like our parents and everybody did with us. You got to stay in school. Ain't no if, when, ain't no if and some but about it. You must stay in school. Ain't no shooting hooking, hanging out and gonna let the dope boys to work for them. You're gonna go to school in this city. And we're gonna get the police and the sheriff, police and everybody, anything they need to make sure we can keep these young people in school during school hours. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're going to go to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages six nine five two inclusive their own and municipal docket of claims in the amount of four million fifty thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second. Ms. Gillian, will you cover large claims for us, please?
Yes. Good evening, Gillian Caldwell, Controller. The four largest claims on this docket are as follows. Richards Disposal, Inc. of Jackson, eight hundred fifty-one thousand, Fund Nine Sanitation Fund, Residential Solid Waste Collection. The second largest is to M V Contract Transportation, Inc. The amount is four hundred seventy-one thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents from Fund One Eighty-seven Transportation Fund for the July twenty-twenty-five fixed route service. The third largest claim is to Entergy. The amount is three hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and three cents. Fund One General Fund for the streetlights. The fourth largest claim is to Huntington Technology Finance, Inc. The amount is three hundred forty-two thousand eighty-five dollars. Fund One General Fund for the October twenty-twenty-five lease payment.
That's it? All right, thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments about claims?
Mr. President.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you. On the first claim, Richards Disposal, eight hundred fifty-one thousand, it comes out of Fund Number Nine Sanitation Landfill. I know that we've got a challenge with, with our funding because of the water bill situation where the garbage is paid, collected through the water bill. What is the status of Fund Nine's funding at this point in time with five days left to go or six or seven days left to go in this fiscal year?
Um, I will let someone from Solid Waste or, I see Fidelis is on the screen, not sure if he's able to respond.
Mr. Melonbeck, are you able to respond?
But I can give you a report. I can check and give you a report.
Well, I think what's, it's kind of short notice right now. I know that the, um, I'll defer to Mr. the next question. If we can find some information about that, I, it's just a real problem we've got with, with water and with garbage being collected with the water bills and all the challenges that Jackson Water has right now and their own collection problems. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, I noticed that this is getting just a tad bit off, but legal, are there any updates for us our ability to get paid, to have our money returned to the City of Jackson for solid waste?
I know you ask legal, Peter Davidson, interim C A O. I probably have the better information.
Okay, I agree.
So I was on the weekly call with Mr. Henneffin this morning and despite his previous representation, he has held the money. Apparently, he still has our money. And he has suggested, and I think this comes out of last week's court hearing and the meetings we had, that over the next couple of weeks, we get some better information to decide whether he should remit those funds to us and then we pay him for our water bill or how we make that wash out in the way that is mutually beneficial for the City of Jackson and Jackson Water. With respect to going forward, I've already directed city staff to explore how we would separate billing and what the cost of that would be if we were to take that on as a city function. And there'll be a couple of options we'll bring back to you. One would be direct city billing. The other would be attaching it to the property tax bill. And of course, the third would be leaving it with Jackson Water, realizing that there is likely going to be some change in the structure of Jackson Water next year. So if you will allow us to get into October, we're going to bring you back several options and update you with respect to that.
I appreciate that. Just one follow-up. Have Judge Wingate chime in on this?
No question. Has he chimed in? No. He needs to chime in and I think part of what we need to do as a city is if Mr. Henneffin and Jackson Water get the congressional appropriation they're looking for, we need to make sure that he doesn't simply pay Jacobs and Viola and his other debts, but that he also pays the City of Jackson any amounts that he may withhold that he owes us. I can also tell you that he has represented to me this morning in finances checking that he is only one quarter behind on his personnel costs that he owes the City of Jackson. So we'll update you on that as well in October.
We shouldn't have to swap out water for trash problem now.
I agree, sir.
That's right.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, the, uh, the issues, you said a lot of important things in that response. So I know to me, we're going to get into a, a large fight because number one, the money should have been with Jackson all the time. It never should have. We should have been giving the money out to them instead of giving it to us that they're not doing. My issue now is the people, what the people are saying about SEMA's, where's the SEMA's money that we had left? And I think Judge Wingate asked about it also. Because if we have SEMA's money left and they cutting people water off like nine to go on north, they're like, we ought to have some money to help offset some of these water bills that people saying they're not, they don't owe. Then you got people saying they sending in cash and the cash is disappearing. And then they telling people, you know, well, you just send the money. Yes, we did. You know, I'd have put on it, on the bill, do not send cash, or you got to have honest people. When cash coming in there, they not stealing it, you know? So I, I know you played it full on this water thing, but it's gonna get a lot worse because they are turning people water off and people calling council members every day complaining about what's going on. And we can't allow this city to be diseased where people can't bathe and rodents and can't flush toilets and all these things taking place in this city. Somebody's gonna get sick and the federal government gonna come here and really look at this city and this council. Because we got to do something to create an avenue where our citizens are not gonna get sick. I think the blue bonnet plague in New York many, many years ago came from rats. And that's where we're gonna have a lot of rats in this city if we don't do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments about claims, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Abstain. All right. Oppose? And this is? Abstain. Okay. So that's three, three in favor, two abstentions. We got four? Four? Okay. Okay. All right, all right, all right. Thank you, colleagues. You ready? All right, colleagues, number eighteen has been pulled by the administration. I'm sorry, number seventeen, payroll, please.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number three-two-seven-three-five-two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
It moved in properly, second. Excuse me. Any questions or comments about payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Before we move to item nineteen, I see one of my former students out there, Dr. Mia Ashley. Welcome to the chambers, Ms. Ashley. All right, good to see you. All right, item nineteen, colleagues.
Order authorizing the mayor to sign a statement of work with Civic Plus LLC for a twelve-month subscription to Next Request, the platform used for managing public record requests for the City of Jackson.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item nineteen? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Foot, how do you vote? Four, okay. You got everybody? Seven zero? All right, thank you. All right, item twenty, please.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a subordination, non-disturbance, and automent agreement and estoppel certificate regarding the property located at nine sixty-five Bobby Rush Boulevard, Jackson, Mississippi, three-nine-two-zero-nine, Western Plaza Shopping Center, where the City of Jackson Police Department precinct two is a tenant.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second. I know we had a, a nice vocabulary lesson yesterday in work session about this item, colleagues. Are there any more questions or comments?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know you know where to stop with me.
Yeah. What are we stopping? I'm talking, we don't, I'm asking people, we're talking, we're, I gotta leave early. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain. I want abstention, all right. All right, item twenty-one has been pulled by the administration. Item twenty-two, please.
Order ratifying the acceptance of services rendered from R J Young and authorization of payment in the amount of four thousand eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item twenty-two? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item twenty-three.
Order ratifying the emergency procurement of a professional services, service from Global Sector Security LLC and authorizing payment of invoice number seven-one-zero-eight-three for services rendered on D S X system door located at the Department of Information, Technology, and Telecommunications on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five.
So move.
Second.
That's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Twenty-four?
Order ratifying the emergency procurement of a professional service from J M C Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Overhead Door Company of Jackson, Mississippi, and authorizing payment of invoice number twenty-five twenty-five for the reprogramming of ten remotes and replacements of a C R twenty-thirty-two battery at twenty-three twenty Riverside Drive.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item twenty-four? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item twenty-five?
Order ratifying the emergency procurement of a professional service from J M C Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Overhead Door Company of Jackson, Mississippi, and authorizing payment of invoice number sixty-four, sixteen forty for the replacement of hinges on a secure door at twenty-three twenty Riverside Drive in the year twenty-twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Item twenty-six?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Antenna Site License Agreement with Alltel Corporation, doing business as Verizon Wireless, to install antennas associated cables and site equipment to tire site number seven, Fire Station Nineteen, located at fifty-eight oh two Ridgewood Road.
So move.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second. I know we had a pretty good discussion about this yesterday, Mr. Parkinson. Are there any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Seven zero, thank you, colleagues. Item twenty-seven?
Order amending the August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five order authorizing the mayor to execute a forty-eight month rental agreement with Advantage Business Systems, Inc., for five copiers to support the Department of Human and Cultural Services.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item twenty-seven?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, thank you, sir. Item twenty-eight?
Final order granting applications on the Forest Park Apartments to L P, doing business as Forest Park Apartments, a partial ad valorem tax exemption of forty mils for a five-year tax exemption resulting from the rehabilitation and renovation of the Forest Park Apartments completed December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, as authorized by Section twenty-seven dash thirty-one dash fifty.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second. I know we talked about this at length yesterday in, um, in work session. Are there any more questions or comments about this item?
Question.
Mister, okay, Mr. Stokes and then Mr. Foot.
Forty year? Somebody explain that?
Forty mils?
Forty mil. Forty mils? We exempting them for forty mils?
This would have been the resolution that the previous council passed last December and indicated its support. And now the individuals have said they have completed what they were supposed to do and are asking the council to honor what the previous council said by way of abatement. Mr. Davis can give additional detail.
Let me make sure I understand. I know some changes. Mils, the value of a mil can change.
Right.
Now, in most cases, a mil used to be a little over a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about forty million dollars?
No, sir.
What we talking about?
We're talking about taking forty mils off of the tax bill for this property owner. And again, this administration would not have recommended a forty mil reduction, but the previous administration and the previous council entered into an agreement with this developer that said if they developed the property, they would recommend relieving forty mils of the tax burden. Mr. Stokes, I personally think that is more than I'm comfortable with, but I wasn't here making a recommendation. So what we are doing under this administration is trying to carry forth with the commitments that have been previously made by the city. Obviously, you are the deliberative body. You are successors to the deliberative body that initially went down this path and it's your choice.
Well, I'm a father, the new mayor, and that's a lot of money. And I just can't. Start that president because other developer company, you gave him that kind of break. Why can't we get it? You know, normally, we have a, we have a, what I consider a fair process. And with that fair process, that should have been ignored. Now, maybe got through the last council, you know, maybe they were rushing through, I, I don't know what all the facts are, but that is too much. We're in this city, need money for more police officers. We need cars, we need raises, we need all of this and we, we giving away money, throwing it away like there's no tomorrow. You can't tell another company that come before us, who asks us, "When you gave it to them, why not us?" We can't tell them we like them better. So I, I need to leave, but I'm gonna stay and vote no on this.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, my question is, or I got two questions. One, since we're on forty mils in the, can you tell us in dollar terms how much that forty mils of adjustment for their taxes at Forest Park Apartments is?
Great. Michael Davis, Office of Economic Development. So as you, as you look at the, the increment value that this apartment complex development induced, which was a little over eight million dollars, of that, it's then run through the assessment value of Hines County, which brings the assessment value of Heinz County, which brings it down to a little over a million and a half. That portion is the portion that we will look at, um, the millage amount, which is point zero four times that one point million, which will break down to what the, the annual tax bill would be, and that's the abatement amount.
So can you, so, um, so run through that, run it through the multiplication table, and what, what do you get? You get forty thou- forty thousand dollars?
No. Over, over a five-year period, we're talking about right at two hundred and some thousand.
So it's like forty thousand dollars a year for five years?
Correct. And all, all the calculations and the formally information is in your packet, uh, in the memo.
Oh, is, okay. All right, so the next question I've got is, is, um, are they up to date on their water bill?
So I did my homework on that. After, you know, the question, I reached out to, uh, Jackson Water, stayed online for just a little while, talked to a customer service rep. She asked me a number of questions. I introduced myself as a employee of the City of Jackson. I'm calling to see if this particular applicant is up to date. Not how much, whatever. She put me on hold, said she had to talk to someone, then she came back and said that we'll have somebody to follow up with you. So that's where I am with that, uh, waiting to hear back to confirm if, if the, the applicant is, is up to date.
Okay. We don't know now, though.
At the present time.
I appreciate you checking the seat, if you can find out.
And plus, we, we have not heard any, any outburst from the applicant, the residents there, so.
Okay.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
You're welcome.
Ms. Clark?
Okay, um, this is an ordinance that's been around for a while, right? So I suggest that we honor the fifty thousand after personally, and then we amend the ordinance in the future, and we won't be in this position.
May I respond?
Yes, sir.
I don't think you need to amend the ordinance. I think the, um, administration needs, needs to make reasoned recommendations that the council properly deliberates in the future. Traditionally, uh, we've been able to exempt millage for up to twenty years under state statute. I would tell you when the mayors Milton and Johnson, they had a self-imposed ten-to-twelve year recommendation of any millage exemption. This is a five-year millage exemption. We control the terms of that exemption. I think the proper way going forward is not to necessarily cap ourselves, but make sure we fully understand what we're abating at the time we're adopting these going forward. Now, the one suggestion, if you want to amend it, is to make sure they're current with their water bills, and it's good to know that the City of Jackson is treated just like every other Jackson citizen when we call Jackson Water.
Ms. Clark?
Okay, I'm okay with that, but we give tax credits for fifteen years. So this is five years. So I'm saying, if we gonna do five years, it's not a big deal with five years. I'm looking at the amount, but really it's fifty thousand times five years, it's two hundred and fifty thousand. We give, um, contracts for two hundred and fifty thousand. So it's not a lot of money in the scope of the whole thing in terms of looking at fifty thousand times five years. But in the future, we need to look at it in detail, but we need to honor what we voted for. And part of this administrat- uh, administration, if we voted in December, the majority of us were here.
Right. These, these are incentives or tools that we as a municipality have to be able to realize, enhance housing for, for some of our residents here in Jackson.
Mr. Foot?
I'd like to propose an amendment as, um, suggested by the, um, Mr. Tavison, that the, the contingency, I'm not sure how you'd word the amendment, but, um, would be the, the, um, tax exemption of forty mils would be contention upon them being in good standing with Jackson Water on their water bills.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments on this amendment? Clerk, do you have it? You have it? All right, Mr. Parkinson?
Just to be clear, was thi- this was not contingent when we initially approved, when I say we, I mean the, the council. This was not contingent when it was passed in December, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
That's my only question, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments on?
We can still amend it, though, can't we?
Yeah.
You're not trying, you're not trying to say we can't amend it.
I'm not questioning our legal ability to do it. What I'm suggesting is, in order for us to, to do business with anyone in the city, they need to know that when we strike a deal with them, we're gonna follow through on that deal. So I, I have, I have no doubt that the council has the legal ability to make this amendment if you, if you so choose. I personally will be voting against this amendment, not because I don't like the spirit of it, and I, and I think in the future, if we have a similar thing, I one hundred percent support that, but for the reasons stated, I, I don't support this particular amendment.
Okay, well, I just would follow up and just say that, that we as a council, and I think the administration too, we have to take strong stand that we expect apartment complexes to pay their water bills, and they, so we can get out of this crisis that we're mired in right now. Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Foot. Uh, when this was passed, a lot of things wasn't, we weren't aware of a lot of things, including our problems with apartments, water issues, et cetera. So why I, I, I do, I do agree with Mr. Parkinson that, uh, at, you know, ethically, you know, we, we need to do the right thing, but we are in, we're in a different situation now and moving forward. I will support.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
This administration will, will recommend that any future abatement the council considers is contingent on the property owner, apartment or otherwise, having a current water bill.
Thank you.
You will not get a recommendation from this administration that doesn't include that language. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments about the proposed amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? Three, opposed? Four, fails? All right. So now we have the item on the floor. The original item on the floor. Are there any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Four, opposed? Two, abstained? All right, y'all need to raise your hands high so we can see. It's kind of dark in here. Says four, two, and one. All right, thank you. Item twenty-nine? Be safe, Mr. Stokes.
Order amending the May seventh, twenty twenty-four order authorizing the mayor to extend and execute an amendment to the agreement with K L Warren and Parker P L L C to represent the city in annexation matters, increasing the not-to-exceed amount from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. We had a very in-depth conversation about this, even talking about furniture yesterday in, um, in work session. Are there any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Six, one, thank you. Any abstentions? Oh, yeah, five, one. It's been a long day, y'all. All right, uh, item thirty?
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims in the matter of Deborah Bennett versus City of Jackson in Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number twenty-three dash three, seven, five.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Six, zero? Okay. Thank you. Item thirty-one?
Order authorizing mayor to execute a lease and related documents with LaFleur Bluff Properties LLC and Wise Carter Chau and Caraway Law Firm to lease office space and to purchase office furniture for the office of the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been, it's been moved in properly, second. Colleagues, you should have a copy of thirty-one in your hand, okay? Any questions or comments about item thirty-one? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero, thank you. All right, item thirty-two?
Order authorizing mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the United Way of the Capital Area, Inc., in the City of Jackson for placement and maintenance of Narcan distribution box within the Warren Hood Building.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this item? Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we talked a little bit about this before, uh, and we'll have a proclamation in a little bit, um, but, but, uh, drug overdoses and opioid overdoses, uh, is a really important issue in the city. Uh, it's an issue that is very personal to me. My own sister has passed away of a drug overdose. Uh, this is something that affects, uh, Jacksonians and people of any race, any age, any gender. Uh, it affects a lot of people. And I urge, uh, Jacksonians to think of Narcan as an extension of your first aid kit. If somebody is having a heart attack, we want an automatic external defibrillator onsite ready to address that problem. If somebody is having an allergic reaction, we want them to have an EpiPen onsite. And if somebody is having a drug overdose, we want them to have Narcan onsite that can save lives. Some of the people who can benefit from Narcan are people like my sister, who made a lot of poor decisions, uh, but that does not mean that, that death is warranted, and that can save your life. But even if you disagree with me on that, and even if you think people who do that make their own choices and they need to deal with consequences, people should also be aware that there have been cases in this very city where, uh, you have had senior citizens who have been accidentally over-prescribed medication. These are not active drug users. These are just regular citizens who, by a clerical error or whatever, have been given, uh, that drugs that could lead to an overdose. Having Narcan onsite, uh, can save those people's lives. And so what this does is it allows for a dispenser to be placed in the hood building that is accessible to the general public, and it will be stocked, uh, by, uh, by the United Way and, and partners that they have established, uh, with Narcan. And any member of the general public can go and get, uh, this device and, and carry it on their person, put it in your purse, keep it in your office, keep it in wherever. And if somebody around you is experiencing an overdose, uh, you have the ability to intervene using the, uh, instructions that Ms. McCarthy had, has placed today. Uh, earlier today, we, uh, heard a demonstration during public comment on how to use this. Later today, we'll have a proclamation on Save a Life Day, which is just coming Thursday, and today we are voting on this action. So what we have is through these three initiatives, we have an education component, we have a, a celebratory, uh, symbolic component, and this is the action. This is actually doing something, uh, to actually make a difference. And so, um, I thank you for your consideration of this matter. I thank everybody who has been a part of making it happen, uh, and I urge you to vote in favor of this.
All right, are there any more questions or comments about this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero, thank you. Item thirty-three?
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item thirty-three? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero, thank you. Item thirty-four?
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item thirty-four? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero, thank you. Item thirty-five?
Resolution of the Jettis- Jackson City Council opposing public and private school choice programs that undermine public education.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Uh, colleagues, yesterday we had a pretty spirited debate about this. Uh, Councilman Parkinson and I, um, me being a public school educator and him being a, what, former charter school principal?
Public charter.
Public charter principal. Uh, and we're not gonna go down that rabbit hole tonight, but what this basically does is mirrors an action that has already been set forth by the City of Clinton, and basically, I think we both agree that we need to do what we need to do to save, uh, funding for our public schools, uh, and make sure that we're completely, uh, fully supporting our public schools and that public dollars don't go to support private schools. Are there any questions or comments about this item? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? All right, five, zero, I mean, five, one. All right, Mr. Foot, I see you. All right. Item thirty-six?
Resolution of the Jackson City Council supporting the enactment and execution of the congressional legislation, the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act and Freedom Vote Act.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Uh, just like I explained yesterday during work session, these acts basically help to protect voters' rights. Um, the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Advancement Act basically tries to reestablish the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five and also puts more framing in place to help protect voters' rights. Are there any more questions or comments about this item, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, six, zero, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I move to add an emergency item. It's an order authorizing the mayor to submit a proposal to Metropolitan Planning Organization to apply for the call for projects, federal transportation alternatives, funding to increase access and mobility for non-drivers in the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in properly, second. Our colleagues, in order to add this item as an emergency item, we must have all six votes in favor. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Hartley?
It's just the one thing, the justification for the emergency is that there's a deadline, uh, regarding funding.
All right. Are there any more questions or comments? All in favor of adding this item? Six, zero, thank you. Let me get on the floor.
Order authorizing mayor to submit a proposal to Metropolitan Planning Organization to apply for the call for projects, federal transportation alternatives, funding to increase access and mobility for non-drivers in the City of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about this emergency item? Mr. Foot?
Yeah, as I read it, that the document that, um, uh, Councilman Parkinson provided me said that there was like seven million dollars of this grant money, I guess, that's available through C M P D D, that's Central City Planning Development District. If that's the case, um, the, is it, um, just gonna be limited, is our request just gonna be limited to the specific bridge that Mr. Parkinson talked about? Are there other opportunities, um, that might, you know, be available in our, in other walking or, or hiking areas of the city that we could also apply for, um, funds for, or grants for?
Peter, there was an interim C A O. We have a September thirtieth deadline. If you have another project, try and tell us tomorrow, and we'll be more than happy to submit any other projects anyone has. I'd like to think with seven million dollars available, we have a shot at getting some funding. Mr. Parkinson had talked about his particular bridge and, and got the deadline. However, if you have something else you'd like or any other council member, just let us know. Our grants team is in here tonight, and we will get on it and get something submitted by next week.
God, dude, there are some plans in place for par- bridges for, for walkways or, or bridge, bridges over, that we, we for, for walking over Hanging Moss Creek. Gotcha.
Any more questions or comments? All right. Sounds like Shaw Road Bridge may get fixed, too. All right, all in favor? All right, six, zero, thank you, colleagues. Item thirty-seven?
Order allocating grant funds to various organizations to implement strategies that reduce gun-related violence and provide community-centered services in Jackson and authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with grant recipients.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments about item thirty-seven? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero, thank you, colleagues. Item thirty-eight?
Order authorizing the mayor to approve a professional service with SIM Strategies and Resource Group LLC, a consultant to provide technical and capacity-building assistance for the city grants management processes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments about item thirty-eight? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose? Five, one, thank you. Item thirty-nine?
Order authorizing the mayor to approve a professional service with SIM, with Systems Consulting Associates, Inc., a hired consultant to provide technical and review in the development of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, any, any questions or comments about item thirty-nine? Hearing none, all in favor? Oppose? Five, one, all right? All right, thank you. Now, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and move to discussion. Item forty, Mr. Tableson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now-departed Chief Wade came before this body and addressed you on the panhandling statute. After that, Sheriff Chief Jones came before this body and addressed you on the panhandling statute. Both of those individuals summon the name of Robert West. Dr. Robert West is present with us tonight. He works at JPD. Dr. West and I got together last week. I know him from my previous time at the city. He's testified in federal court on several matters where I was attorney for the city. And the upside of the state ordinance is it takes effect January first, and we are not required to do anything unless this body wants to opt out of the ordinance. With that, I'll let Dr. West make a few comments to this body, and we'll take any questions.
Dr. West, say your name for the record, please.
Yes, Dr. Robert West, Jr., Jackson Police Department, Life Superintendent, Division, Supply. House Bill eleven ninety-seven, and I'll be brief. House Bill eleven ninety-seven was created to keep people that was on major intersections from panhandling or soliciting. The option was to make sure that if a city or town wanted to allow someone to panhandle at those intersections, that they would be required to have to get a permit. And that permit process would look like they would have to have a valid government ID. The permit would only be good for, from nine o'clock in the morning to dusk dark. The other part of it was that they would only be able to have one location, and then they would have to get a permit every day. And so that one within itself was what the state had required for a person that would be able to get a permit. Now, what they did was they made it possible for every city and town to have an option as to if they wanted to allow panhandling or solicitation within their cities, that they would have to do that. Most of the towns and the cities in Mississippi was looking out for people who could not look out for themselves, so they did not want them to be standing on these major intersections. So the House Bill eleven ninety-seven only covered major intersections such as your highways and your major thoroughfares. And so if we do not want panhandling, soliciting on our major intersections, then this particular law was signed by Governor Tate Reeves July the first, and then there's kind of a six-month educational period that takes place from July the first to December the thirty-first. And then after December the thirty-first, once January the first come in, Happy New Year, then every law enforcement agency will be able to enforce House Bill eleven ninety-seven, whether they are Jackson Police Department, Sheriff Department, U.S. Marshal. This gives every law enforcement the opportunity to look out for those people who sometimes can't necessarily look out for themselves. And so we are hoping that we can allow this particular House bill to take effect come January the first, and then we can partner with all of our law enforcement partners to kind of help eradicate some of the things that we see that could potentially be a problem.
Thank you, Dr. West.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, the administration recommends allowing the law to take effect and not try to establish a permitting system. I will also note that it's specifically written in state statute that primary enforcement of panhandling in the capital city district is on Capitol Police. And so I'm sure all of us are going to make sure that we hold them accountable for enforcing this law and moving individuals away from major intersections. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Doctor West. Colleagues, I'm going to ho- hold my item. Councilman Stokes asked to hold his items. Now we're going to move to item forty-four. Review and continuation of the COVID-nineteen local emergency. If, I need a show of hands, please. Mr. Foot, you got it? Forty-four, the local emergency for COVID.
Good to go on that.
Everybody's good?
All right, thank you. Item forty-five? I don't know why I'm bracing for impact.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, I have, there's one pending settlement that we need to get a straw poll from the council on that I can't do in public, open session.
Okay. So which one do you say?
I'm only making motion. We moved going to exec and into.
We're not going to do that yet. You can, you can spend the night here, but we're not going to do that just yet. We got two proclamations. So let's go ahead. We'll just table you for a minute, okay?
That'll be fine.
All right, thank you, sir. And then let's go ahead and move to proclamations, item forty-six and forty-seven, please.
Proclamation declaring September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as Save a Life Day.
All right, Mayor Horn?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'd like to first ask that the folks with United Way and any other persons concerned with Save a Life Day come to the podium with me. You know, as has been mentioned, especially by Councilman Parkinson, this issue of opioid addiction and opioid deaths that are generally accidental touches just about every family. We all have someone in our families or extended families that have fallen victim to this, this situation. And so it gives me great pleasure today that the City of Jackson will go on record as recognizing the devastating impact of opioid epidemics on families, neighborhoods, and communities throughout Mississippi, but especially right here in the City of Jackson. Opioid overdoses are now one of the leading causes of accidental death in the United States and here in Jackson. And overdose deaths can often be prevented through timely intervention and widespread availability of the lifesaving, saving medication Naloxone, also known as Narcan. And so Save a Life Day, which takes, takes place on Thursday, is a collaborative community effort focused on distributing free Naloxone and providing overdose prevention education and equipping individuals with knowledge and tools to interview, excuse me, to intervene in an opioid overdose emergency spearheaded locally by the United Way of the Capital Area. And as a consequence of that, I am hereby proclaiming September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as Save a Life Day in the City of Jackson, and urge all citizens to participate in activities that support overdose prevention, increase awareness, and promote the use of Naloxone to save lives.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for your work. Item forty-seven is another proclamation. Mayor Horn?
Proclamation declaring September as Service Dog Month in Jackson, Mississippi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Service dogs provide vital assistance to individuals with disabilities, enhancing independence, mobility, safety, and quality of life for thousands of Americans, including veterans, children, and adults in our community. And Service Dogs Month has been established and recognized for the month of September nationwide, an observance dedicated to honoring the profound contribution of service dogs and raising community awareness about their important role and the rights guaranteed to their handlers. And organizations such as K-9 Companions and other accredited service dog nonprofits and support service dog partnerships empowering people to lead fuller lives and promoting inclusive, inclusivity in Jackson and beyond. And as a consequence of that, as mayor of the City of Jackson, and by virtue of the authority vested in me, I do hereby declare and proclaim September as Service Dog Month in the City of Jackson. And we'd like to thank Sarah Sergi and her family. What's his name, Sarah?
His name's Ephron.
Ephron.
He's providing commendable service to our community and to you especially.
Is Ephron smiling? Ephron's the most well-behaved thing in here, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and go to item forty-eight, financial reports. Please, if you just about show of hands, let me know that you've got your reports. All right, very good. Now, Mr. Foot, I'll take that motion to go into.
Closed session.
Closed session for the person going into executive session to discuss litigation or pending litigation. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved in properly. Second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. If you are not party to this conversation, please leave the chambers. Colleagues, please turn off your mics and put them back on the charging base. All right, we are out of executive session. No official action was taken. Colleagues, are there any closing comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Parkinson?
Just a few announcements. First, this Saturday, there is the Walk for Diabetes, which is going to be held at LaFleur's Bluff Playground, Playground, I think that's the museum, the museum. Registration is at eight-thirty a.m., and the walk will begin at ten a.m. Also, a week from Saturday, the Dootaville Community Neighborhood is hosting a cleanup day, and interested parties can email brenda carpenter twenty-six at gmail dot com. And finally, we encourage everybody to wear purple on Thursday in honor of Save a Life Day.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one quick announcement. Ray McCants and Oak Street Health, they will have a senior safari at the Jackson Zoo. Seniors can enjoy interest into the zoo, music and raffle prizes, complimentary lunch, complimentary carousel rides, and, and that's going to be Tuesday, September the thirtieth, at from ten a.m. to one p.m.
Thank you. Ms. Clay?
This Saturday from eight to twelve, we'll have a cleanup focusing on Manhattan Road and Woodway, sponsored by Fresh Start Ministries.
All right, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week, the PGA tournament will be coming to Jackson for the Sanderson Farms Golf Tournament, Major League Sports Event, and Jackson's the only host in the state of Mississippi for a Major League Sports Event, so we need to show up and have fun.
Thank you. I'm hoping to get some tickets from somewhere. Mr. Mayor?
Don't call my office.
First thing in the morning.
I just wanted to inform the council that first thing in the morning, I'm headed for Washington, D.C. to meet with our congressional delegation specifically to talk about Jackson Water and their money shortage issues to try to get fifty-four million dollars moved from the capital fund over to operations and maintenance. I will also be meeting with EPA and on a separate note, meeting with officials with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Safe travels, Mayor. We know you're going to secure the bag. Mr. Tableson?
A little early, but Saturday, October eighteenth, will be Roll Off Dumpster Day at the Old Norwood Shopping Center, ten-twenty Forest Avenue. We will announce that again before this, but Saturday, October eighteenth, will be Roll Off Dumpster Dumpster Day at ten-twenty Forest Avenue. Further, the administration expects to announce next month that we will have an increase in roll-off dumpster days, and we're looking at doing each ward every month. So we are trying to be ambitious. We have heard the council throughout budget that blight is a priority. And so I'm a little early on this. We'll announce it again. But hopefully, next month, we will also be announcing a ramped-up roll-off dumpster and cleanup program. Thank you.
Mr. Hartley, you must bought them once. Not yet. But we are putting in, in that budget for the, an additional roll-off dumpster truck so we can have our own ability to, to drop off those dumpsters as well.
Yes.
And, and Mayor, if you don't mind, after the meeting, I'd like to check with you. All right. Is there anything else to come before this body? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Ninety-one minutes.